I'll call on Dwayne since he just stood up and walked out of the room.
There he is.
Okay, so shall we start? Go ahead. Go ahead, Dwayne, start us. Oh, you're muted. I can't hear anybody.
Okay, unmuted. There we go. All right. Ready? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
It sounded like Ronus birthday. Happy birthday.
We should all just been muted. Okay, can we get roll call?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Zerk?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Vanden Eyck?
Here.
Chairperson Daris?
Here.
For the record, Commissioner Wolf is in excused absence, so we have six present and one absent.
Okay, thank you, Annette. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I saw move.
I'll second. Moved by Michael Shaw, second by Dwayne Anderson, and roll call, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Zerk?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Vanden Eyck?
Yes.
Chairperson Daris?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, do we know if we have anybody waiting for public comment that's not on the agenda or things that's not on the agenda? I'll still make the announcement, I suppose, but well, this is time for public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on a matter not on this agenda or which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making your presentation. The commission may take action to direct the staff to place the matter of business on a future agenda. So do we have anybody wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda?
We do not have anybody on the phone.
Okay, thank you. Then I will close public comment. And on the consent calendar, we just have the draft minutes, it looks like. So can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Let's see, so moved by Jeff Vanden Eyck, second by Tori King. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairperson Vanden Eyck?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Zerk?
Yes.
Chairperson Daris?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you, Annette. All right, no community development staff reports, so we'll move on to public hearings. For each of the following items, the public will be given an opportunity to speak. After the staff report, the chair will open to the open for the public hearing to invite the public to any and invite the applicant or the applicant's representatives to make comments. Members of the public will be invited to provide testimony to the commission following the applicant. Speakers state their name for the record and address the commission for three minutes after public comments have been received. The public hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss the item and take appropriate action. Before we get started, we have two items on the agenda. The first one is a conditional use permit for a new gym, so I will ask the commissioners if any of them, any of you have ex parte on this item. Well, I'll just go down the line. Mike?
No.
Tom?
No.
Dwayne?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Tori?
Nope.
And none for me. Okay, so no ex parte for anybody. And with that, I will turn it over to staff for your report.
Thank you. This is Mariah. Let me share my screen. Does someone have to give me permission to share my screen? Sorry about this. Normally it pops up.
I'll do that right now, Mariah, sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Should be good to go now.
There we go, I can see that.
All right, there you go.
Okay, can you still see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. So yes, this is a conditional use permit for a new indoor recreation service or a gym at 8200 El Camino Real. Permit is use 20-0045. So taking a look at the zoning map, the project is in the commercial retail zoning district surrounded by commercial retail with Highway 101 to the west and a little bit of commercial professional zoning to the east there in the purple. The property itself is approximately six acres. So here's an aerial view of the site. We'll talk about it a little bit more in a second, but the proposed gym is going to share a building with the existing Smart and Final grocery store. And then you can see the parking lot and it's right along El Camino and backs up to Highway 101 again. So a little bit of background about the building. It was built in 1999 and the entire 57,680 square foot space was originally occupied by the grocery store Albertson's. In 2016, Smart and Final took over the lease and split the building, leaving about a third of it vacant. So the vacant spaces, most people probably wouldn't even realize it's there because there's no entrance facing the street or parking lot. It's it's just a vacant space inside the building. So the proposal comes from Planet Fitness to move into the 18,400 square foot space to operate a 24-hour gym. The space consists of approximately 10,400 square feet for an area for workout equipment. It also includes locker rooms. They have services such as massage and tanning services, and then there's a central reception area. And then another request that the applicant is proposing is in addition to an existing freeway sign along Highway 101. So the municipal code allows indoor recreation services such as gyms in the commercial retail zoning district with a conditional use permit, which is why it's being brought before the planning commission tonight. So the site plan just gives you a little bit of a better look at the relationship between the proposed Planet Fitness and the existing Smart and Final grocery store. And then at the top there, you can see the little circle is where the existing freeway pylon sign is that they're wanting to alter. So to discuss parking, the municipal code requires one parking space for every 300 square, 300 square feet of space in health spas, which this would be considered for the parking purposes. Planet Fitness under these regulations requires 62 spaces and as a grocery store, Smart and Final requires 203 spaces. The entire site has over 300 parking spaces, so there is a sufficient number of spaces to accommodate the proposed use. Also, just something to mention is that Planet Fitness doesn't offer classes at their facilities, so they generally require fewer parking spaces than gyms that might have classes would. Planet Fitness isn't anticipating any noise to emanate from the building as they'll just be playing light music for those that are in the fitness club, but it will be kept at a volume that can only be heard within the facility. So here is looking at the front of what would be the Planet Fitness. You can see, as I mentioned before, there is no public entrance, so it's pretty easy to miss that there's even a vacant space here. Applicant is proposing to add a new entrance that's compatible with what's existing in the shopping center. So at this time, staff is not recommending any changes to what the applicant's proposing. So we can see and compare the two here. The top elevation that you see there is what's existing and then the bottom. You can see that the applicant would be adding a little parapet over a door utilizing those columns and then adding a sign above that doorway. So the parking lot is landscaped throughout. However, some of the parking lot planters are becoming a little bit barren, showing the irrigation drip lines as well as the dirt beneath the landscaping. So staff's added a recommend or added a condition and recommends that the applicant fill in these landscape voids with drought tolerant species that are the same or similar species that are currently on the site. So as I'd mentioned before, the applicant is proposing in addition to an existing freeway pylon sign facing Highway 101 that's currently occupied by Smart and Final and Wendy's. Discretionary approval is required for all freeway oriented signage, which is why it's being brought up now. The center has a master sign program, but it doesn't include any language about this pole sign. This was added with the building permit for the original Albertson's. So here are two renderings that the applicant provided. The first one adds their Planet Fitness sign to the top of the existing pylon sign, making it a little bit taller. And the second one would add the Planet Fitness sign below the Wendy's sign and not affecting the height of the sign at all. And this is what it looks like when you're driving on Highway 101. So imagine, you know, a sign above or below. That's what the applicant is proposing. The municipal code limits pole mounted signs to be no taller than 50 feet. The existing sign is only 30 feet tall. Since the gym is going to be utilizing the second largest tenant space, they would be a major tenant of the center, so staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the second rendering, which would allow Planet Fitness to add a sign consistent with the size of the other two to the bottom of the freeway pylon sign. The conditions of approval are included in your staff. The project qualifies for a Class 1 categorical exemption under CEQA, since it's an interior remodel and does not involve an expansion of an existing use. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt PC Resolution 2020 approving use 20-0045, allowing an indoor recreation service use in the commercial retail zone based on findings and subject to conditions of approval. As always, the commission may approve modifications to the project. The commission can determine that more information is needed and refer it back to staff or the commission can deny the deny the permit. And staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mariah. Then I will open this up to the commission for questions. First staff, does anybody have any questions? Michael, you got your hand up first, go for it.
I've got a couple of questions. The property owner is Roscher Amel and Adle Hard. Is that correct? Is that the people that originally built the building?
I'm not sure who originally pulled the building permit in 1999, but those are the current owners.
And they're not a local company, I don't think, are they?
I'm not sure if they're local. The applicant might be able to give us more insight on that.
Oh, that's all right. And the applicant is Rachel Beeler. And is she a local person?
Um, I don't believe Rachel is. I think she's in attendance. I believe she is part of the franchise, the Planet Fitness franchise. I don't think she's actually based here, though.
Oh, so she isn't the franchisee?
Um, I think she is a part of the franchisee group. That's something that she can elaborate on, though, a little bit more, I think.
Okay, and if you look at the the site plan on the north end of that Planet Fitness, it looked like there's another building, a smaller building. And is that going to be an orphan or something now? Right now, yeah, right there, you can see it right on the left there, on the left, yeah, right there, that.
So this is, um, this is a different, these are a couple of different spaces occupied by different tenants. But this isn't part of the the big building that was a split that was originally Albertson's.
So it's a nail salon or something like that?
I believe so, maybe a nail salon, maybe it's a restaurant.
Used to be a pizza joint there at one point, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's all my questions.
All right, thank you, Michael. Anybody else have questions? Dwayne, you're up next. Sorry, Tom, I'll get to you next.
Um, you know, you mentioned the landscaping of the the existing islands. Exactly is, you're not saying they're responsible for all of them, right? Just like some in front of it? Can you clarify that?
Um, the landscape planters within the the property, so they would be within the entire Smart and Final property unless the planning commission wants to adjust that.
Yeah, you can see why I asked the question because you're making them responsible for the entire parking lot and it's really used by a whole bunch of people, so we can, we can, we can discuss that, I suppose, in a minute.
Anything else, Dwayne?
That's it.
Okay, Tom, you're up.
If you, uh, Mike, Michael, if you look on page 20, draft resolution, it says that the applicant Rachel Beeler, and it has an address in Toms River, New Jersey. I consider that that must be the home office of Planet Fitness as far as, you know, and they are franchisees, right?
Correct, yeah. I don't know the full relationship between, you know, the Planet Fitness parent company and the franchisees, but Rachel can probably elaborate more on that if you're interested.
Yeah, I would assume that she must be in the franchise headquarters, wherever that might be, and all I saw, Toms River. So, yeah, as far as the the landscaping, did you specify that it was to be just the immediate surrounding entrance to the new gym?
So I actually don't think that the conditions, let me double check.
That area probably has not been used much for parking.
Yeah, typically what we do, I know we've done this on other projects with, um, let's say, like Vons. If Vons is doing some kind of major improvement, which I think they did just a couple of years ago, we made them comply with the original landscape plan, which was the landscape plan for the entire center. That's usually how it's done, or for the whole property, I should say. So that that's, I can specify, um, but typically it is done for the entire property that the project is located on. Just and it's, and like I said, the land, the parking planters are landscaped, they're just kind of freshening them up, so it's not like they're, you know, planting everything new.
Would we pose that to the to the applicant as to repairing any adequate drip systems to keep the plants going?
So the the parking, oh, go ahead.
Entire project, entire property, that the applicant ensure that all drip systems are working in coordination with Smart and Final?
Um.
Let's just ask her if she could, if they can do that.
So, yeah, just to clarify, the the property is what you see in yellow here, so it's not, you know, quite the entire thing. But yeah, typically we would have them, you know, clean up all of that landscaping and if they wanted to work it out with the owner and Smart and Final and negotiate, you know, who does that, they could do that separately.
Yeah, I think this is the one time you can get it, the property kind of lifted up and it would be to their advantage.
Okay, anything else, Tom?
No, that's fine. I just think it's a good idea.
Okay, Jeff, did you have anything?
No, okay, and I actually have a comment also on the on the landscaping that you showed the one picture of that planted area, which I believe is right in front of the proposed Planet Fitness.
Yes.
And I'm trying to think, from this angle, you can't really see, but behind it is another large area that has pavers that used to have a big oak tree in it. And the oak tree died because there were pavers around it. So my question, and I know with oak trees, you're not supposed to plant anything within the drip line. So I just want to make sure that it's investigated by staff or whoever that if like this particular planter is going to be filled in with other vegetation, that it's not going to affect the life of this tree. I don't know if this tree is like an oak tree where you can't plant anything in the drip line, but I'm just concerned about that because I hate to see these trees fail. We lost a beautiful oak tree that was in that, I think, I'm pretty sure this is a parking lot where that happened. That might have, maybe it was, you know what, that might be over by by food for less, but anyway, it happened in one of the park, I think it was food for less. It happened in the in the parking lot there. So anyway, my concern is, I agree that the landscaping should be freshened up as much as it can, but I think staff should look into whether or not it's going to affect the trees that are in these planters like that. And that's, that's the only thing I have on that.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Tori, you're up.
Have we had any other interest in this property at all, or is this like the first person who's been interested?
I'll answer that question. Phil Dunn's more here. There's been a little bit of interest in here, but from what I understand, there's been some, for some reason or another, restrictions as to who can move in next to Smart and Final based on the lease. The way this is set up, it's kind of strange. So I know others like Harbor Freight have looked at this location and for some reason there was something in the lease or the agreement where that didn't work out for whatever reason. So we've been really working with folks to try and get somebody in here. It's kind of interesting you ask that question, but there's some strange situations with that. In addition, there's a, it's, what's interesting is a very large parcel out front too in this parking lot that's available for commercial development. And that's why that parking lot seems so big. It's actually a place, the whole farmer's market, that's a vacant separate parcel where someone could develop an entire restaurant or another space.
Okay.
And, um, I forgot what I was going to ask, never mind.
Well, we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Okay, if nobody else, anybody else have any questions? Because we can open it up to the applicant at this point.
No.
Okay, see, nobody come forward. Then if the applicant is available, then now's the time, please come forward, state your name for the record. And you have unlimited time to tell us what you need to tell us about your project. Do we have the applicant?
Uh, yeah, let me loop them in through the webinar. Hey, Andrew, I think you're muted.
Good evening, Mr. Chair member of the commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yes.
My name's Andrew Davies from N Consulting, part of the applicant team. Don't have a specific agenda to speak on tonight about the project, although I can respond to some of the questions that were directed towards staff. Rachel is indeed, she's in attendance tonight and she's part of the franchisee staff, or part of the franchisee. And there will be manager appointed once the store is open, who will be running the the center and would be responsible for interaction with the city to the extent that that was a concern, Commissioner Shaw. As far as the landscape goes, I can speak to that just briefly. Planet Fitness would be signing a lease for the space specifically, but would be, would need to coordinate with the property owner to perform any repairs of the commission or improvements that the commission deems necessary for the approval of the CUP.
Okay.
I've been happy to, happy to address any other questions that he'd like or have, and Rachel is also available, if you have any questions specifically for her as well.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Did anybody have questions of the applicant? Mike, did you have questions or were they answered?
I think that answered it.
Okay. Yeah, Dwayne, your hand up?
Yeah, um, the, I'm not really familiar with Planet Fitness. Do you guys have like a smoothie bar or any kind of thing like that inside?
Generally, not a smoothie bar. They do have a stand that sells pre-prepared drinks and bars and that kind of thing.
Okay.
So nothing is made on site.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Tom, you're up.
Yeah, could you tell us a little more about the size of the the locker rooms? How many people? What's the capacity? And how do you plan to enforce COVID requirements in this building?
That might be a question that's better suited to Rachel. I don't know if she's able to speak or has the the permission currently, but I'll ask her to.
Right, as you know, I think it's fairly well known that some of our other clubs here in town have had to move the equipment outside of their building, the workout equipment because of proximity and and the regulations that the state has put on things. And I'm just wondering how you plan to to make that comply with that.
Hi, good, good evening. This is Rachel Beeler. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sorry, Rachel, thank you.
Oh, great, no problem. Thank you. Okay, so to start, I'll just go ahead and start with that last question and then I can backpedal a little bit for you. We have a men's and women's locker room that's set up such that people can change their clothes. We'll have four men's showers and four women's showers in each, and then there are toilet facilities and sinks, you know, some urinals in the men's and toilets in the women's. With the COVID restrictions, this is a very interesting topic for us. Obviously, as a company, our franchise, and yes, I am part of the franchise group. Our accounting office and marketing office is up in New Jersey. I'm actually located down in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. And as Director of Construction, I'm responsible for our locations in southeast Florida, all of central California and northeast New Jersey because normally they like me on airplanes, I guess. But this would be our 14th location in California, so I spend quite a bit of time out there and enjoy it. In California, the restrictions have been really different by municipality. So as a, as a company, Planet Fitness has a very strict requirement with regards to masks and that everyone is required to wear masks in the gym. They've gone so far as to, in many locations, require that even when working out on equipment, people are required to wear masks. And we feel that this is an important part to keep all of our members and staff safe, so we're pretty strict about enforcing that. We also for social distancing, despite the fact we fully intend to equip the gym as if COVID went away in hopes that it does. We have restrictions on the proximity of equipment and equipment use. So even though we have, you know, 30 to 40 treadmills in a couple of rows next to each other, there will be too out of order for everyone that is in operation so that we again keep our our memberships safe and comfortable while they're working out with social distancing. The same thing holds true for our strength machine. The same thing holds true for our strength machines and equipment. We reduce the amount of equipment available to people such that there is always a six-foot clearance. Unfortunately, this does not provide for us to have the maximum occupancy that a gym of any size really. Can accommodate, but we really believe that it's what we need to do to take part in helping keep everybody safe. I think that gets to most of the questions. Oh, with the landscape, again, to reiterate what Andrew mentioned. This is a very peculiar lease situation in that we're actually a subtenant of Smart and Final. So the landlord, who I'll call the master landlord, because they're above who my direct contact is for the lease. They're responsible for the common areas, and then we contribute as a subtenant. Based on square footage of the overall center and property towards the landscaping for the property. And so, again, we definitely are fine with contributing to the landscape. But it, there are restrictions that are outside of my control. To be able to provide the maximum, I can't, as much as I'd like to spend some of the other co-tenants money to beautify a location. But we're absolutely willing to do that. And with note to the tree. Issue, that, that is an issue that we've run into before, and I actually, on a personal note, do master gardening, so. I love that. And yeah, if you disturb tree roots too much, you're going to kill the tree no matter how much you try and tend to the tree after the fact. So we do need to make that a consideration in determining how we will plant the. Planters in a better way.
Okay. And actually, I want to, since you're on that subject, I want to ask another question on that. The, if Mariah, if you can hear me, if you can pull up that site plan that had the yellow boundary. That showed, you know, where everything is. It was, it kind of surprised me. I guess I didn't realize that part of the condition of approval was that. Was all of the landscaping on the property needed to be freshened up, for lack of a better term. And obviously, we've got a lot. In the north corner of it, north, was that northwest corner of it, which is in the boundary. So. Have you negotiated with the owner, with the master landlord or whoever it is, and how? And this question goes to you and to possibly Phil on how this is going to get negotiated to what you're willing to do versus what. The, the main landlord is going to have to do and what, what the city is going to. Require in terms of getting this to meet the conditions.
And Chair, if I can weigh in on this before we have Rachel weigh in. One thing I will say is that a landscape plan of this size is generally the responsibility of the entire project. When the project was built, it came along with a landscape plan and conditions of approval. That require that landscape plan to be maintained in perpetuity. And so that's the responsibility of the entire property. It is kind of difficult to single out one tenant to be responsible for all of that. But a change in tenants and the addition of a major tenant is a time to follow up with that. So that we can remind the property owner and require the property owner to maintain that landscape. Then it becomes a negotiation between the tenant and the landowner to make sure that the landscape is in good order. But. And this is my opinion, it's my opinion that pinning the landscape requirement on one tenant is not. Appropriate, but it is appropriate that the landscape be updated and maintained for the entire site. And that's a responsibility of all of the tenants and the property owner to make sure that happens. But now is the time to make sure that happens when we get a larger new tenant. But that's something, again, that. Too much to put the burden on one tenant to make them financially responsible for the entire thing. And again, that's my opinion on that particular topic.
All right, hold on just a second, Tom. You'll be, yeah, so that was, that goes to my question. So, you know, if she's negotiated with the landlord on what. Based on the square footage of their site to do, you know, landscaping based on that, then there's the remaining portion of it. How does the city? Then get the owner. To, I mean, whatever else is deemed to need to be done.
And that's a continued discussion with the owner to make sure that happens prior to the final occupancy of Planet Fitness. So that, that all needs to come together. So staff needs to work with that owner to make sure that's happening. The reality is, if, if any landscape plan in any commercial project is not up to par. It's their responsibility to maintain that to happen, and it's the city's responsibility to remind them to make sure that continues to happen. And in some cases, it's difficult to get action on that. And so it's timely when you do have a project with a conditional use permit to try and promote that action.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Tom, do you have a question? Go for it.
For Rachel, is she still on?
Yes, sir.
Are you acceptable to the staff recommendation that your signage on US 101 is at the bottom of the pillar rather than the top?
Yes, we are acceptable with that. Unfortunately, that I've been told from our sign company makes it a much more expensive. Modification to that sign versus raising it and just bringing Smart and Final up and Wendy's up and us going to the bottom of the sign. But, you know, to make sure that we have that kind of visibility, it's important to us. And so, yeah, that is acceptable.
Well, you. I, I thought that the code said the sign can be up to 50 feet tall, and you're only at 30 feet. Does that, does staff recommend that they don't raise it to the 45 or 50 foot top? So all signs are a little bit higher?
That's my understanding is that they did not want us to make that sign taller. And so. Again, yeah, if we were to raise the sign taller, we, I do not believe, according to my sign company, would even hit the 50 foot. Or, you know, height. So I do believe that we could raise the sign height. And raise everybody up and still be on the bottom rung of it at a more cost-effective way. But that, you know, that's really up to staff and.
Well, it's up to us to consider the fact that there's no harm done. Be practical in this matter. And I certainly don't think that Smart and Final or Wendy's would have any objection as to having a little taller sign. I think it would be something that I would add as an amendment to this draft.
I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. And actually, I would like to ask Phil. If he could weigh in on why you were recommending the sign not be raised. Clearly, it's not going to even come anywhere near the 50 foot mark. So I'm just curious on the, on the thought process there.
I think that's entirely up to the commission unless our staff, Mariah, you know, may want to weigh into that. I think I'm completely neutral on that particular topic.
Yeah, just to weigh in, this is Mariah. Just to weigh in, it seems with these freeway signs. If they can be seen really clearly without making it taller. You know, we prefer that option because it just seems a little bit less invasive, I suppose. It's just a little more. Just a little softer of a change, I suppose. But if it's a big, you know, cost to the applicant. And the planning commission is comfortable with it, I don't think it's, you know, a huge deal to add it to the top.
Well, to continue on with that. It is set back further from the actual freeway because it's, there's an off-ramp in front of it. Pushed back perhaps a 15, 20 feet or whatever it actually is. From where it would normally be right next to the. In fact, where is it on this map that you're showing us now?
So on this map, I believe it's right around here. Can you see my mouse?
It's just about 10 or 15 feet or a little bit pushed back. Okay. I, I certainly would add, if the rest of the commissioners are in favor, but I would give the benefit to the applicant.
I don't see any harm in it, but I would like to, Rachel, if you're still there, do you know approximately how much it would raise, just so we can get an idea? How much taller it would be?
It would be the equivalent of the existing panel signs, which I. Let me see if I can.
Eight feet, it was looks like to me.
Correct, correct. Yes, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, just to clarify, the existing signs are four feet by 18 and a half feet, and then there would, you know, be a little bit. Around the sign that would add some height, but it probably wouldn't be more than five or six feet of height.
Right.
In the, in the interest of, yeah, in the interest of economics, I certainly would not be opposed to making it a little bit taller. Do it the least expensive way. I think that's a better choice.
Well, we want to be a business town, don't we?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Because then I can open it up to public if there's anybody.
I have one quick question.
Go for it.
Since you're going to be a 24-hour gym, are there going to be lights, any additional lights on in the parking lot? Or you need any additional lighting? That could bother any residential area around?
No, we, we don't, we don't typically change any lighting that's already approved in part of a parking area. Parking spaces and shopping centers are typically lit all through the night for just general safety purposes. So we don't ask for anything additional other than making sure that there's enough safety lights for people to feel comfortable. Walking at night to and from their cars into our gym.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, do we have anybody from the public that wishes to make a, have a question or make a comment on this project?
I don't believe we do.
Nobody, thank you, John. Okay, so no public, nobody from the public? No, last chance for questions for the applicant before I close public comment. Seeing none, then we'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and an action, if we could.
I propose to make a motion. For adopt craft PC Resolution 2020. Regarding a conditional use permit, use 20 dash 0045. Allowing recreational recreation service use in the commercial retail zone based on findings. And subject to conditions of approval with an additional. Allowance that the. Sign on facing US 101 be allowed to be raised up to a maximum. Of 45 feet or thereabouts. You guys can modify that if you wish, staff. So that the applicant could put their sign underneath at the least expensive, or you don't need that. So the applicant can put their sign at the bottom.
Okay, we have a motion. If I get a second.
I think, I think that, that we were discussing the option where the sign is on the top, weren't we?
No.
No?
She's, she's accepted the bottom. And she just is, we're just raising it up so it's not a big burden for her.
I'll second Tom's motion with the amendment.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Tom Zirk, a second by Tori Keen. Could we get real call, please, Annette?
Yes, Commissioner Zirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff?
Yes.
Chairperson DeRis?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you, Annette. Good luck, Andrew and Rachel, on your project. We welcome you to town.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Our next item, conditional use permit for a garage at 7900 Sinaloa Avenue. Do we have any expertise? And I'll just go down the squares on my screen here, starting with Michael. Any expertise on this?
None.
Dwayne, well, now you scrambled them up or something to Dwayne. Dwayne, no expertise. Tori, any expertise?
No.
Tom?
No.
None for Tom and Jeff?
No.
And none for me. Okay, so with that, I will turn it over to staff for the report. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. This is John. I'll be discussing the oversized accessory structure use permit this evening. So the project is at 7900 Sinaloa Avenue. That's a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory structure, and the project number is use 20 dash 0061. Here you see the project location on Sinaloa Avenue, towards the front of the property. Which is outlined in red, is the existing residence. And the applicant is proposing to place the accessory structure, which is a garage, detached garage, towards the rear of the property. And the zoning is residential multifamily. And the parcel is approximately 0.29 acres. The project is located in the RMF 24 zoning district, and adjacent to the commercial professional zone along El Comino Real. Sorry, backwards. The parcel has an existing primary residence on site of approximately 864 square feet. The applicant is proposing to place a 720 square foot detached garage, which will be approximately 13.5 feet tall. Constructed from prefabricated steel sheathing. And there's also an existing all-weather driveway that could access to the proposed structure. We propose use of the structures for vehicle and outdoor equipment storage. Under Municipal Section 9 dash 6.106, structures that are greater than 50%. Of the gross floor area of the primary structure on site requires the approval of a CUP. And they are proposing a structure that is more than 50% of the primary residence on site. Here's the site plan. Sorry, it's a little busy. But in red, in the dash red, you see the location of the detached garage that is proposed. Towards the front of the property along Sinaloa Avenue is the existing residence. And then along the northern property line is a, is the all-weather driveway, which is already existing. And then towards the rear of the property, there's also an existing asphalt pavement area. Here are the project elevations. The proposed structure on the north side has a garage door and a door for entrance and access to the structure. The basic floor plan, as you can see, it will be used for storage. The current site conditions, on the left, you see the location of the posed garage. On the right, you see the tent, which will be taken down, or is already taken down. To place the garage towards the rear of the property. This is the justification statement that wasn't included in the staff report. I won't read the whole statement, but they're basically stating that they're outdoor enthusiasts and would like additional storage. To store their outdoor vehicles and off-road equipment. As the existing primary residence does not have sufficient size for storage of the vehicles. And I also believe we have the applicant on the phone. If we have any specific questions. The applicant is requesting a reduction in the setback, in the rear setback to, from a 10-foot setback to a 5-foot setback. However, the proposed height of the accessory structure is approximately 3.5 feet. And therefore, the exception to the underlying zoning setback cannot be approved. Architectural compatibility, as I stated earlier, the structure is made from prefabricated galvanized corrugated steel sheathing. There is a garage and a pedestrian door on the north side of the proposed structure. And no windows or facade features are proposed for the other three elevations. Um and no windows or facade features are proposed for the other three elevations. To increase neighborhood compatibility, staff is recommending that additional windows, larger roof overhangs and earth tone colors uh be added to the structure. The proposed conditions, uh the exterior building and roof colors shall be earth toned and the roof uh shall be a darker contrasting color than the walls. However, I believe the applicant is proposing to paint the structure the same color as the existing primary residence on site. Staff is recommending that windows and the larger roof overhangs be added to the structure to ensure neighborhood compatibility. And that the code required minimum ten-foot rear setback be maintained. The project does meet all the required conditional use permit findings with the proposed conditions. And the project is exempt from SEQA under section fifteen three oh three for the construction of accessory structures. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt resolution PC twenty twenty approving the C U P uh twenty dash zero zero sixty-one, allowing for an oversized accessory structure on the property with proposed conditions at seventy-nine hundred Sinaloa. Alternatively, the commission may approve modifications to the project. The commission may determine that more information is needed and refer the item back to staff. Or the commission may deny the permit. And we're here for any questions, and I also believe the applicant is on the phone as well.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, questions for staff? Who wants to go first? Tom, you're up first.
Um, John?
Yes.
Is there any indication that the thirteen point five feet will be visible from either uh side of the property, either the uh El Camino side or the Sinaloa side? Uh or are there trees uh and existing buildings blocking it?
Uh the property won't be highly visible from Sinaloa Avenue. Um however, I'm not sure if it'll be visible from the properties along El Camino. There is a large oak tree between the existing residents and the proposed garage. But maybe the photos can show some greater clarification. So it does appear that there are trees blocking um the side of the structure as well.
The one on the right that the photo is looking towards El Camino?
Yeah, the the property on the other side of the fence there, um on the foot on the right, would be along El Camino.
Okay.
And that that tent structure is where the proposed garage is.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Tom. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I have a question. Uh one of the recommendations from staff was larger windows and overhangs, I believe, somewhere near. Um I'm looking at the elevations, I don't see any windows. Are we are we recommending that they at least put a window in somewhere?
Exactly, yeah. We're recommending to ensure neighborhood compatibility. Uh most of the properties adjacent are single-family residences. Um so we are recommending that they put some windows on the structure.
It also seems like it would get really hot, just a giant steel structure with no windows.
Probably.
And and if I if I may add just a couple of comments onto your question about the windows. We are in a short time, whenever we have time, it's been busy, going to be developing a set of um design standards for these types of accessory structures. And what we will be doing also is removing most of these structures from the conditional use permit requirement, but instead having neighborhood compatibility design features that are incorporated by code, which would mean compatibility with the house, roof features, siding, windows, things that look more like it should be in a neighborhood. Now, keeping in mind, a structure of this size typically wouldn't trigger a use permit. The only thing that's really triggered a use permit on this one is because the house is so small. So it's, you know, essentially overseeing that fifty percent rule. But I wanted to just throw that thing out there. As we talk about windows, we're talking about neighborhood compatibility and really kind of moving forward when we um do adopt our design code. Now, I do know that the owner does have concerns about windows on this particular pro- project because they do want to make sure that they keep this building secure and they're not gonna have people looking in. There's definitely different ways you can get around that. You can put really high up windows that are seven or eight feet up on the wall that are clear story windows. Or you can do something that looks like windows, or you can do other features on the outside of this thing. They just bring a little more neighborhood compatibility, whether that's through color or whether that's through um a different treatment to it, a lot of different options. But obviously, that may be a cost issue as well, so something to think about um as we discuss the design and um some of the use permit issues with the with the project. Otherwise, staff is is certainly in support of um the use permit this evening. Thank you.
Is uh is that something that um staff is willing to work directly with the applicant on? So we don't have to make a decision on the size and the location of windows and?
Yes, as long as you mandate that they do something specific or not, but give us specific directions. Um and we're happy to work with the applicant on the final design of whatever that item is. But the commission needs to decide whether it's, is it gonna be windows, is it gonna be nothing, is it gonna be, you know, some other design feature, and then from there, we can definitely work uh with the applicant um based on that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, anybody else have a question? I've got one more. Um John, I have a question on utilities. I I imagine there'll be power run out here for lights and whatnot. Is there any other, any other utilities, gas or or water or sewer, anything like that that's gonna be run to this?
Um as far as I understand, there there will not be.
Okay, so just power for whatever electrical needs, okay? Uh, okay, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, then I will, oh, actually, we'll open this up to the uh to the applicant now, um if the applicant is available. Did you say the applicant was, I think you did say that. So if the applicant is here, then we can hear your pitch on this.
Yes, I'm connecting now.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh my name is Joel Hitchens. I am here with my wife, Brianna Hitchens, and we'd like to thank you for your time and hearing this project. Uh just a little bit about us, we're new homeowners to Tascadero. We're coming up on two years here. Uh we love it here, and we're looking to kind of set up a family here. And so this property is something that we are interested in investing in and improving. And if you drive down the street, um it'll stand out the front of it. And so with this with this metal building, uh yeah, we know, we're looking to create a safe place to store equipment. Right now, running electrical down there isn't really a concern of ours. We just want a safe place to store um a a vehicle and then some expensive cycling equipment. We've got uh no problems with the uh earth tone colors. We do plan to make it match the house. And the rear setback is also no problem. Um just about the windows and the larger roof overhangs. Uh we were just looking for a little clarity on how much larger the overhangs would need to be. For the drawing, they're measured at eight inches. And of our own home right now, they're measured at about ten inches. And we spoke with the building company, and uh it would be uh in excess of a thousand dollars to add two extra inches to make it match the home. So we're kind of hoping the roof overhang um can kind of just be left as is. Uh we understand if not. And then with the windows, um security was our concern there because this will primarily be a storage structure. Um we've had firsthand accounts from our neighbors, and Sinaloa seems to be a a hotspot for people jumping fences and running through the yard. Um so we would just like to keep security to uh a maximum here, but we we do like the recommendation of windows up high. Um that that was a pretty good suggestion. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time.
Okay, well, as far as the windows go, are are you concerned about people being able people being able to peer inside or break the windows and get inside? I mean, cause blinds, you can put blinds up and that looks like what your house looks like if they're closed. But is it so just a security thing where a window can be broken and somebody can go in? Is that what your concern is?
That's a big part of it. Um it's also a little cost prohibitive. We're looking to finish out the landscaping. And so just it's another thing that we we could add down the road, but at the moment, it's a little cost prohibitive. And then the other two ele- there's two elevations that face out um into a fence. So there's no point in having a window there. And then the window looking up the property, we were going to do kind of like a hedge wall of um a tree that we're kind of using for privacy along the so it'll kind of break up the building, and the building is not visible.
Mark, before you go any further, I'm gonna ask the commission to excuse me from participation. Uh my pain has got to a level I can't concentrate.
Oh, okay. All right, Tom, take care of yourself.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, all right. That's more important. Okay, um sorry for that interruption there. Um Joel, did we, did you have more that you wanted to add? I think you were?
No, that was that was pretty much the sum and substance of it. Yeah, it's mostly security. And, you know, we could um fog the windows or cover them with blinds, like you mentioned. Um we're not opposed to windows. Um they just, at at the moment, they seem a little cost prohibitive, and that's that was the only reason there.
Yeah, you know, my initial thought, looking at the site plan, is that it it does not appear that this structure is gonna be very visible from the street, maybe a little bit between the house and the property line. Um and I'd hate to compromise security for a window. And if you you said that you're gonna create a hedge or something that's gonna even block it more?
Yeah, correct. So the the west side, no, I guess it was supposed to be east side of the property. So looking up the property towards Sinaloa, yeah, we want to kind of landscape along the side of the building and kind of knock down the big um just big flat wall space right there. So it'll it'll get broken up with a landscape plan back there.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um any questions from the commission for the applicant?
Yeah, go ahead, Dwayne.
Oh, actually, not a question for the applicant. I I was just gonna reinforce that. All along, I've been thinking, one of the things that we've been doing with with the situations like this has been adding um landscape conditions that break up the the wall as well as anything else that you might do. So, you know, I'm I'm leaning more towards that we, he's already heading in that direction. So we just clarify that that's something we'd like, and although I'm not really for putting a window or putting windows in just because, you know, they they should have some kind of function, so anyway.
I I think that would be a good compromise, a a landscape barrier, like make it so you don't need windows. Tori, did you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, it's not really our jurisdiction, but I'm I'm still concerned that it's a giant steel building, and we have really hot days, and you're trying to store equipment in that. And so it seems to me like putting in a couple of high windows would just not only make it nicer looking, but also give ventilation so that your equipment doesn't get damaged by the heat. So I I'm kind of for the higher windows. That way, they're up a few feet, you know, above that hedge for security reasons, but it does give it a, you know, a more friendly neighborhood look. And also, um, you know, it's better for your equipment, so it doesn't get to be hundred twenty, hundred fifty degrees in that building.
That that's a good point. And also, Joel, did you say you were not gonna be running power to this building?
Uh correct, we are not running power to the building at the moment. Uh so no plans of that um this year.
Okay, but sometime sometime down the future, you might?
We'd like, yeah, we'd like to leave that option open, but again, it's a little costly a bit of it at the moment. And then
With no windows uh and no lights, you're gonna have a dark space even in the middle of the day, a little bit.
The big bay door. And again, this is mostly just for storage, um and then it it could get developed out into a more functional garage. Uh once we get everything else on the property a little more tuned up. Uh I appreciate the concerns about heat in there, and that was initially one of the reasons why we wanted to go for a a white roof rather than a darker roof. Um but we understand, um if you look around, no one has a white roof, so we don't want to be the the large white roof in the in the neighborhood. So there are options that we can look at in terms of venting, um and that I I do appreciate your concern there.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any callers, Kelly or whoever is handling that um that wishes to weigh in on this?
No, we have no public callers.
No callers, okay. So one last chance to ask questions of the applicant before we bring it back to the commission. And seeing none, um thank you, Joel, for your for your comments. Uh we'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and the possible action. So what do we got here? I I, you know, I'm I'm kind of in, I mean, I'm in favor of windows. I think the higher windows might look nice. Um but I don't want to compromise security. I think ventilation is gonna be important, but that's that's
Yeah. I feel like leaving them at eight inch overhangs, but requiring some high windows might be like a good compromise, especially since they're looking at cost. Um even if it's just like, I don't know, see, I'm not just like maybe two windows, you know, higher than eight feet. I mean, if it's thirteen and a half feet tall, we put a, you know, a height on there and leave those over.
A two foot tall, two foot by four foot, clear story type window up high with a high high sill. It's gonna be hard to climb through it, hard to get up. I I would, I would, I would recommend that. I I think that part could potentially be visible from the roadway. Uh and that would help the soften the look of a of a metal building in the backyard.
Yeah. And definitely the color of the building to match the house, which he seems fine with. And then the, you know, making sure the roof matches with the neighborhood. I think all those are good um qualifications.
Okay, all right. So I think we agree, and also, anybody else has a comment? I think we agree on high clear story windows. Uh we don't need to extend the the uh the eaves, uh that seems like it's cost prohibitive. It's not necessary for two inches. Uh so Phil, we're gonna leave that up. If it's in the motion, if somebody would might make some motion to leave that up to working with with you, working with the applicant on the windows and location and size, uh but I think a high clear story window, whether it's operable or not, um you guys can discuss. I think lighting is gonna be important, but anyway, something that's difficult to climb up through and break and whatnot. I think if you guys can work with them, I think we'd be good with that.
I I just, I just wanna throw throw out, like, um I don't want to leave an open-ended thing, windows, like how many windows and where. It's, it doesn't make sense to put windows where they're just like
On the east-facing wall, I think. I I would, the one that faces Sinaloa.
Okay, that, yeah, that's the only one that makes any sense to put windows.
That clarified so that we're not chasing our tail.
Right, right.
I'll bet you, I'll bet you too, windows cost as much as increasing the overhang.
It could, it could. Um, okay, um, anything else from the commission before somebody makes a motion?
I I I don't, I don't want, then if we're gonna do the windows, then I want to leave uh any landscaping issues around the building up to the applicant himself.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, then with that, I'll 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 uh make a motion that we adopt the draft resolution approving conditional use permit uh C U P USC two zero dash zero zero six one, allowing a seven hundred and twenty square foot detached garage based on findings and subject conditions of approval.
Thank you, Dwayne. Can I get a second from somebody?
Second.
Second, okay. Motion from Dwayne Anderson, second from Michael Shaw. Can we get a roll call, please, Annette?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify something. So um just kind of from what I've heard. So what the windows, you say, are are they both gonna face Sinaloa?
Be one or two or windows, we'll we'll work on the number of, or the staff can work on the number of windows. But yes, on the on the east-facing side, the side that faces Sinaloa.
Okay, and your uh motion includes the color, uh what Tori said, the color to match the house, the roof will match the neighborhood, and no need to extend the eaves, and staff will work with applicant on that?
Correct.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, got it. So Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh Commissioner Zirk is gone. Um Vice Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. All right, good luck, Joel, on your project. If you're still there. That's okay, he's muted. All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, so we're moving on here, almost to the finish line. Commissioner comments and reports, does anybody have anything that they wish to bring up at this point um from the commission? Seeing nobody rush to raise their hand, then we'll close that and go to director's report. Phil, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, our next hearing date is October sixth. We do not have any items on the agenda for that night. So you can uh take that night off, but we do have something coming up for the twentieth of October. We should be ready to bring you our housing
We should be ready to bring you our housing element of the general plan for final adoption. It's with the state for review right now, and we just got comments back from them. And we have made some very minor edits to it, and we're back in the review round with them. We hope to have some acceptance by them very soon. And so we'll be bringing that to you and to the city council. So that's coming up. There aren't any other development projects that I foresee coming to you in the very near future, but there's some stuff that will be coming in ultimately. I also do want to suggest a little bit of homework to planning commissioners. It did catch me off guard, and I think on our last hearing where Commissioner Wolf had mentioned, hey, what's the status of the downtown concept for the streets? Which had been approved at city council a couple of weeks earlier. I, I do ask that you take a look at least at the city council agenda every couple of weeks online, and I can show you where to find that, just to see and keep up to speed with what's happening in the community. Really key for us to all do that. If you can, and if you've got time, even tune into the council hearings. We do have a really important one coming up this next Tuesday. And your recommendation for the Del Rio specific plan will be before the, the, or the city council this coming Tuesday. And I forget the other topics that are on there, but a couple of other things. Anyway, it's good just to keep in, in the loop of what's happening at council, a lot of important decisions happening there. And of course, we have a couple candidates right here anyway, so you guys should be keeping in the loop of what they're doing and what's on these.
My kids love watching it during dinner. It's our Tuesday night dinner watching.
Oh, fantastic. Well, anyway, that's, that's where I'll be next Tuesday, probably in the same spot I am now, but presenting the Del Rio plan. Anyway, that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any of your questions if you have questions about stuff that's going on around town.
All right, thank you, Phil. All right, anybody have questions with Phil?
Yeah, I have a question since I've got you, Phil. I sent you that email about the, the A and W restaurant?
Yes.
Yeah, so I went by there. They haven't done anything. I know it's not really planning commission business, but I thought I'd bring it up anyway. There are homeless people living behind the garbage structure. There's a whole bunch of trash. Somebody found a, a needle back there. So if you could just encourage the enforcement guy to go by and be like, dude, you didn't do anything, you need to.
Yes. And so it's on their property, actually on A and W property?
Yes, it is on the A and W property in the back, in the back corner behind the garbage structure, like the wall where the garbage is supposed to go, but doesn't go. They didn't, they don't have the garbage back there. There's a whole bunch of garbage in there, but no garb, their garbage cans are not in there. Behind that is this lovely little inset with clothes and sleeping bags and all kinds of other trash paint buckets. There's new graffiti on there that's new in the last couple of weeks. There's a lot of just like tree debris and yard debris that they're just not cleaning up. And the code enforcement guy did, did let me know that he had spoken with the owner and said, you know, you need to clean this up, but it, it doesn't, it actually looks worse than the last time I was out there. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do, but he needs some extra encouragement to take care of his property. I mean, the whole property in general just looks really unkempt. And a lot of the trees and shrubs just need to be trimmed back. It just looks really sloppy. The signs are not maintained. It's just, I don't know what, what of it is code enforcement and what isn't, but it's, I mean, for such prime property and it's right, it just doesn't look good for the city, I feel like, so.
I would agree. I, I will talk to the property owner myself tomorrow. I know that property owner. He also owns the, the sorrow gas station next door.
Okay.
And I'm surprised that he hasn't taken quicker action on that, because I know they just remodeled the A and W because the whole fascia fell off.
Right.
Recently, recent months, they had all that damage and they just redid it all. And the last thing they want is that kind of an image. Let me find out what's going on there.
Okay.
I will check in with them tomorrow, and I'll check back with you. Yeah, his name, I know, I know that man, so I'll find out what's going on.
This is the good part and the bad part about knowing Phil Dunsmore.
I have a lot of things that get assigned to me, but that's okay. It's part of the job.
I just sent an, I just sent an email to the graffiti team to go check it out.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything? Okay, Phil, did you say there was nothing at this point on October sixth agenda?
That's right. I'm not seeing anything on our schedule for that date at this point.
So, all right, well, then I will adjourn tentatively till October sixth, and everybody have a good evening. Thank you very much.
You too. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thanks, guys. Bye.